Good evening. Good evening, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Wonderful. Good evening. Welcome to the January 30th, 2018 Prince George County Board of Education Physical Year 2019 Budget Work Session. As always, before I begin, a reminder to turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate so they do not interfere with the taping of the meeting. And I will ask Ms. Tate to please call the roll.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Ahmed. Ms. Boston. Mr. Burrows. Ms. Eubanks.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Murray. Ms. Page.
Present.
Ms. Quinteros Grady. Ms. Roche. Mr. Valentine. Mr. Wallace. Ms. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Wiseman. Dr. Eubanks.
Present. Thank you, Ms. Tate. Colleagues and citizens, the Board of Education has convened this evening for the sole purpose to discuss the Physical Year 2019 Budget. The work session this evening is the second of three budget work sessions and three public hearings that this board is conducting to develop its budget submission for consideration to the county executive for FY 2019. The purpose of these budget work sessions is to answer questions and to revise, if necessary, the proposal sent to us by CEO Dr. Kevin Maxwell, so that we submit a budget that meets our highest priorities and represents the best spending plan that will serve all of the students across the county. As we work this out, we do three of these work sessions, and each work session is, covers different aspects of the budget. So, our budget discussion today will include an overview presentation. We'll talk about the areas of school board resources, including school-based budgeting, the deputy superintendent area offices, deputy superintendent for teaching and learning, special education, including health and health services. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to Dr. Maxwell for the, to begin the discussion and get us kicked off.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. As you said, we're gathered here to present a workshop on the budget and have a public hearing to follow. I'm going to turn it over to John Pfister for, to walk us through the segment of this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. Tonight's presentation is almost identical to what we saw a week ago and will be identical to the one we'll see next week. So, I'll try to go through it a little bit faster because I know most of us have already seen this. And then we'll just try to tie all this together into the process. Last week, we did see a little demo, Budget 101 kind of demo PowerPoint presentation. We won't go over that this evening. I believe that's available in your board docs. For the public, it's available on our budget website. So if they'd like to see kind of the process that we go through, that document is useful for that. But here, we'll kind of focus on the nuts and bolts of the CEO's FY 19 request. So, starting off... There we go. Everything is focused on our strategic plan and then our five pillars. And of course, you know, our ultimate goal is outstanding academic achievement for all students. Earlier in the fall, we did do a public survey.
Mr. Pfister, I think everybody knows, but it's on the screen behind us, and so you can follow it with your hard copy for those who don't. So you don't need to screen over backwards. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry. Earlier in the fall, we did a survey, and we've garnered 147 public responses. Those responses are broken up on the pie chart shown here. The greatest concern or the greatest number of comments that we received was on compensation, 16.3 percent. Class size reduction or overcrowding, 18.4. And then, our school facilities, we had a lot of comments on that, and that was about 21 percent of the makeup of those responses. We continue to do this every year. We look for the community input so that we can use those, use the input to continue to craft our budget as we go forward. Through the work of the Fab Committee, the Board's Fab Committee, as well as other committees for the board, they came up with five top priorities. I've listed seven here because after the initial recommendations of the Fab, we realized that there were some additional priorities that the board was very supportive of. So, with those, we have included all seven of these priorities, along with other priorities, but these are the main priorities. We've included these in the CEO's request. With that is compensation, pre-kindergarten expansion, maintenance to deal with some of our facility issues, English-language learner supports, continuing our support of the schools through our student-based budgeting, a new pilot for community schools, and then dealing with our safe and secure environments by adding needs for our security staff. This brings us to a total of over $2.1 billion for the CEO's proposed budget. It's $131 million above last year's, or an increase of 6.7 percent. We break the budget up into what we consider, in several areas. The first one, and what we consider our highest priority, is those things that are mandatory, such as what would be considered legal or some kind of policy mandate. Those things such as charter schools, dual enrollment, teacher and employee retirement compensation, and risk management totals up to be $47.1 million. So that's kind of like the top of our food chain. We try to, you know, put the funds in the budget so that we can address these as our top priority. The next layer below that is things that we call a cost of doing business. And those are the things that were not mandated to do, but we have to continue to do to maintain our continued focus in keeping our budget in line with our strategic plan. Those things are facilities, overtime, transportation, health insurance for our employees, and we have a youth career connection grant that's expiring, and we want to pull some of those resources into the general fund. Those five items total $19.9 million. Now we get into what we consider our focus areas within our program continuations. Focus area one for academic excellence, the $5.7 million that's requested there is to continue the good work we do in our academic programs, arts integration, our P-Tech and 3D scholar programs, and then the continued expansion of pre-K. As we mentioned, the five pillars of the strategic plan, the program enhancements are kind of broken up that way so that we can see exactly what we're looking for and how it supports the strategic plan. So, in our focus area one, academic excellence, and I'm not going to read all of these, but some of the highlights are some of the academic program supports. We're looking for the ELL coaches, community schools, Healthy Start Breakfast, and some continuation on to the next page, higher achievement pilot at Charles Carroll Middle School, continuing restorative practices, special ed staffing, area offices staffing and supports, and the support for our student information system. Those items there total $14.00 million of an additional request above the current year. Focus area two is our high-performing workforce with cultural training, human resources staffing, continuing expansion of our PAR teachers, and then working with our talent development group. That total of that area totals $1.7 million. In focus area three, for safe and supportive environments, we're looking and requesting increased security staffing and equipment, and doing some things to address some of our facility needs by having several programs that we can talk about. We'll probably get into more detail of that next week when we, when we get into these. But that's our maintenance medic program and apprentice shop, looking at pest control and maintenance and mechanical shop supports, and then some additional supplies in our warehouse. That totals $10.7 million. Focus area four is our family and community engagement. We're looking to replace some outdated communications equipment, increase our diversity office with some contractual interpreters, and then also increase our parent engagement assistance, and that pillar totals $1.1 million. And our last focus area is organizational effectiveness, to bring in a consultant to continue our work with the graduation audit, and then adding some staff to bring some outside legal counsel in-house to help save some money there. We're looking at $788,000 to fund those two initiatives. When we proposed the CEO's budget, we were looking to receive about $10.1 million in federal funds, 27.2 from the state. Board sources, very nominal increase, and that's our interest income and use of buildings income. We're not planning at that time to use any of our fund balance, so that's a reduction in revenue because fund balance is a one-time revenue source. And then to meet the $131.5 million total request, the plug figure is what we would be asking for the county, and that was $115.9 million. That's based on 2,144 students in our projected enrollment increases that our county and our state funding was based on. Just recently, we received updated revenue estimates. In fact, our first revenue estimate from the state. Everything remains the same except there's a switch between the state resources. We're expecting about an additional $4 million, and to keep to that same $131 million increase, we reduced our county ask down to $111.6. And this, these two increases are based on 2,226 student increase in our student population. How this looks visually, even though we're talking about a $4 million swing between county revenue and state revenue, it only matters to about 0.2 percent of our total revenue. And that's what's depicted here between the CEO's proposed budget and then what we have as our revised numbers. Our fund balance as of June 30th, 2017 was $136.6 million. However, a lot of that money is committed or already used in the current budget cycle. And as you can see, we've listed that there. So our revenue for the current year budget that we're in, we're using $22 million of our fund balance. We have some things that we have to take care of that's left over from last year. And then we have other committed funds of 49.1. So that leaves us with a total unassigned fund balance of $22.4 million. And what that represents is about 1.1 percent of our proposed budget request. We always ask about county and their maintenance of effort. The county maintenance of effort for what we're projecting for FY 19 based on our enrollment is about $12 million. There are some dedicated taxes. The only one I'm highlighting here is the energy and telecom dedicated tax because as over the past couple of years, this has declined because of the use of cell phones and nobody's having landlines. So the tax on those are declining as revenue coming into the county, and that of course affects our revenue. So we're showing a reduction of $1.2 million. So to go back to the slides before where we're requesting $111.6 million from the county, they're supposed to give us 12 by maintenance of effort. We're asking for $100.8 million above maintenance of effort in our request. And as Dr. Eubanks alluded to earlier, we're going to focus our presentation, our budget discussion tonight, on our school resources pages, deputy superintendent, our area offices, the deputy superintendent for teaching and learning, and then special education, including student and health services. And then finally, we can leave this up if we'd like, just the schedule of our budget work sessions. Of course, we had one last week. Tonight, we are at Central High School. And then next week, we will be same time at Oxon Hill High School. And that concludes my presentation. Before we get started to some question and answer, I know there was a lot of questions last week on the school resources page. And just a little bit of a housekeeping is like, how many elementary school teachers do we have? And are we declining? And, you know, did we request less and something like that? So just a little bit of housekeeping. That FY 19 column is really the, reflects the school-based staffing and resources.
Do you have a page reference for us?
I'm sorry? Yes, page reference? 68.
Page 68.
So now we had a couple of questions last week about some of the numbers that are shown here. And basically, if you look to the far right column, that's our FY 2019 proposed. A lot of this is...
I'm just making sure everyone, everyone there? Everyone where they need to be?
I was kind of scanning. The far right column is FY 2019 proposed. Those numbers always will fluctuate because of the school-based, student-based budgeting process that we have. Because we won't even start that process until March 1st. So those numbers there are a reflection of what we had on hand in those particular positions at the time that we prepared the CEO's proposed budget. That's why you see a little bit of a fluctuation between what we had last year, what was approved, and what is being proposed. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that the proposed column is really a reflection of where our staffing is, or was, as of October of last year. And these numbers will be reflected that once we go through the student-based budgeting process throughout March, April, May, those numbers, as they come back into the budget, will be changed here. However, the bottom line that's allocated to student-based budgeting will not change. It's just that mixture that we've always done throughout the process. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that.
Okay, so, and so the real simple answer to that is you are absolutely not cutting elementary school teachers?
No. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So colleagues, just before we do open it up for questions, one, is it me? Do I need to, do we really need to get closer to the mic? Can people hear me okay? Okay, good. I would remind folks that when you look at board docs, you will see, so last week, we submitted 48 questions to the administration, and those were answered in writing. Those should be on board docs from last week. This week, you will find in board docs, questions 48 through 98. So, an additional, what, 50 questions that have been submitted and answered in writing. Please do, particularly for your particular questions, look at those answers. And obviously, if you want some clarification on any of them, now is the time to seek clarification. So once again, colleagues, I do not have a buzzer. So last week, I started to my right. Let me start to my left this week and ask if anyone on my left wants to be put in the queue for questions. You don't want to be first? All right. Ms. Ahmed and Ms. Page, and neither of them want to go first. Anybody on my right want to jump right in? Ms. Williams, and do you want, Ms. Dr. Wiseman? Are you on, are you on the queue? Ms. Boston? No? Maybe later?
I might have one. It might have been answered.
All right, I'll put you, so, all right. I'll tell you what. Who wants to go first? All right, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. And I apologize if the questions have been answered in the listing. I haven't had an opportunity to go through it, but I think my questions of today are new. I'm starting in the school-based budget resources section. You know, that's my favorite section. And I understand that the, the calculation that's listed in the book is a reflection of what we approved last year. So, I'm not going to talk about that chart. I just want to talk about some of the details that we have listed. So, my first question, which is a general question, and it may be addressed by a specialty resource. The question is around the FACS program, the Student Built House Program. And I understand that the electrical teachers, there is a challenge. I think they're losing their budget. Could we look into that? I think they lost a grant or something to that effect. Could we look into ensuring that, that there is dollars associated with that program and the tradespeople that, that we fund through that program? It's not in this budget.
It wouldn't be under SBB. It will fall under college and career readiness and investment programs. And they are covered, but I'll provide you a page so you can see what category.
Okay. So yeah, I just had a general question on that. That's in the general question. So my first question is, and specifically on school-based budget, is about the SBB formula, not this formulation that you have. Have we, or will we be doing a study on the equity of dollars being put into each of our schools? We have, the SBB is just a portion of a way the schools can be funded. And then we have programs, and then we have other, you know, our locked dollars. Have we done a study to see how effective, or if we're getting the results that we're looking for when we were talking about the SBB? Last year, in academic achievement, we had principals come in and they loved the program the way it's set up because they're able to create a program for the schools to fit their community. But I was wondering if we have, or will we be doing a study to see if we're meeting the goals through our SBB formulas?
And I'm going to ask Ms. Miller also to come up to the mic because my memory is fading just a little bit. But there was a analysis of our SBB done by the University of Maryland. My glitch in my memory is I just don't remember what year. And so she's approaching the mic, and she'll be able to provide more details because we did make changes to the SBB formula based on that study that the University of Maryland did for us.
So, the University of Maryland actually published three or four papers and did some studies for us. And we did make some modifications to our formula to look at the relationship between neighborhood schools without, that don't have, house specialty programs, and then schools that do, in effect, serve both purposes. So we do look at those ratios. However, we don't want to take away necessarily from a school that houses both. So everyone kind of has to maintain that, the levels that they're at now. So we've made some minor adjustments to try to look at that. And we do run a series of equity tests statistically to look at schools that do have higher needs as measured by a whole host of academic, social, discipline. And we do allocate more per pupil to those schools with higher needs than with lower needs. So in terms of achieving those equity factors, those goals, we definitely do test for those. And, and we do show a statistical level of significance for the way that we're using data to allocate funds. So in terms of that equity goal, yes, we can say that we do do that.
So, two questions. One is, is that study available for, for us to review? And the second question is, I know you've made changes based on the, on the study. The challenge that, that I find having a number of small schools is that we tend to lose bot teachers versus losing a program or losing, you know, something that is, that is outside of losing a body in the, in the building. So, I'm just always interested in seeing, I know our need, we look at the, the formula based on needs. But sometimes those needs come and they tend to affect those smaller schools that don't have student body population to carry that number. So, I'm looking, I guess I'm looking for some correlation between the number of students when we're looking at small schools and when we're looking at programs, and when we're looking at school-based dollars to, to show that the outcomes, we're getting the outcomes that we expected from that. But, so, my question is, is that study available for us to look at?
The study definitely is available for you to look at. And I think we just need to be mindful that we are placing a mathematical formula to humans.
Right.
And with that understanding is that, that mathematical formula is a base for schools. However, when each of our schools does their school-based budgeting, while we understand the formula and the set money, if there's anything else that the formula does not allow them to purchase, there's also a supplemental form that they're able to fill out to indicate what they need that they were not able to purchase based on the formula. And for the past two or three years, there have been very few asks on that supplemental form that we have not been able to grant.
And so I know that the schools appreciate the ability to ask for those supplements. I think the, when the discussions are being had with the communities, it's prior to the supplements being done. It's just the base dollars when we're just talking school-based budget. When the conversations are being had with the PTAs, that is prior to them being able to submit a supplement or having the need to submit the supplement. And so what, what I'm finding is that the conversation goes, this is how much money we get. We get X dollars with SBB as a result of our projections. It looks like we, we're going to lose Y teachers. And to the community, it's a big, you know, like, what are we going to do? But I, I must say though, having that period after the SBB conversation is had and submitting the supplement, that is good.
They're all submitted at the same time. So, please understand that it's not a separate process.
Okay.
So what we can do is give additional guidance to the, to the schools that when they are meeting with their parents group and their teacher group, to make sure they ask, even though we have this amount of money, is there anything else that you would like for us to ask for? But when we get the SBB budgets, we also get the supplemental forms. It's not done in a separate, no, no ma'am.
So, so maybe that's what we need, is to have that, because it is very confusing, you know, SBB. But, maybe that's what we need to, maybe we do a SBB workshop or something, I don't know. But, but that, that is one of the first, one of the challenges with SBB. But I'll do, I'll, I'll do a second round when we're ready.
Yes, you, absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Boston?
I'm on the, the school-based resources. And you might have asked, answered this question last week, or one of my colleagues might have asked that question. I need to talk. But on page 71, can you explain to me the increase in this two, is it $2 million? On the tuition private school, what is that for? Can you, a little bit more explanation on that line? On page 71.
Yeah, I see it. Let me, give me a second, I'll, I'll get you an answer.
Okay, thank you. That was the only one I had for right now.
Thank you. Ms. Ahmed, you ready to go?
So, can you all hear me? No? Can you hear me now? Okay. Oh, okay, here we go. So, thank you all for the responses for the, the response packet. I'm going to speak from there first, just to give you a frame of reference. So, under page 62, the Locked Staffing Formula, question 50, it talks about counselors, professional school counselors. And it explains here that counselors at the middle school and high school levels are not locked. That's correct, right?
I'm sorry, Ms. Ahmed, I could barely hear. Could you repeat?
Oh, sorry. So it, the counselors at the middle school and the high school levels are not locked?
Unlocked, yes. They would have to purchase those.
Okay, so, a counselor can be added or removed from the school at the will of the principal due to student-based budgeting.
It would be at, for the school team and the deciding of the, the school team.
What does the school team consist of?
I believe, I apologize, Ms. Ahmed.
No, it's okay.
I believe I heard you ask, who does the school team consist of?
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize. The echo is a little difficult. So there's a few processes, and that's what Board Member Sonia, what, excuse me, Board Member Williams was alluding to as well. The first piece in the SBB process is to get parental input. I'm sorry.
It seems like we've got to get right on top of these microphones.
Is to get parental input, and we also get the entire staff's input as well. So the school team is the community.
Okay. But the ultimate decision is made by the principal in conjunction with the... But the ultimate decision is made by the principal in conjunction with the instructional director, correct?
An associate and deputy.
Okay.
And I don't believe that we've approved any budgets that do not have school counselors in their schoolhouses.
No, I get that. I just think it would mean a lot if we, if we, if we want our students to be college and career-ready, which we all do, we should definitely have counseling positions locked, especially in our high school, especially given what you, what you've said about the fact that every high school has a school counselor. I don't see what making at least one high school counselor a locked position would do except ensure and relay to community that we will have someone there for our students. On, on, uh, the number fifty-two, it says the cost of doing that is near $2 million. But if we already have a person at every school, a high school counselor, I would assume that number would be zero, correct? That financial impact, I mean.
So technically, what you'd have to do is just take the $2 million from SBB and then move it into my division, which would be student services, so that we could ensure that it would be locked. So it really would just be a transfer of funds from one to the other.
Yeah, I, I seriously think that that would be a very good thing for us to do. And, um, I also, I mean, just looking at it, it kind of, it kinda makes sense to me how I feel some of the, it's okay, I'll move on from this, but I do think that that's something that should be considered. I don't know which one of my colleagues put this, asked this question, but I think it's an excellent question asking about the professional school counselors. And I wanna express what I feel is a need to have that as a locked position. The next thing is the AP funding. I saw that there is $700,000 in there for AP funding. I appreciate that. I think our students would appreciate that. So thank you for taking that feedback from last year. And then the, um, question fifty-eight in the packet talks about OCSI and the departments under Strategic and External Affairs. And I feel like time and time again, colleagues ask for the difference between OCSI and Strategy and External Affairs. I know this was a question that came up last time as well. And so I just wanna kinda get a clarification on that. Would it be safe to say that OCSI is more school-based and the Strategy and External Affairs Departments are more system-based?
I think.
Oh, Christian's not here, is he?
Mr. Rhodes is not here, but I think that that is a fair assessment. Our specialists in the Office of Continuous Systemic Improvement are mainly school-based, but they also do help central, assist central office departments as well.
Okay. Um, I just think overall, there are a lot of offices and departments that we have in central office. And I just wonder how actively these offices and departments are being evaluated and the stringency of those evaluations. To my understanding, our principals and our teachers and other staff members go through rigorous reviews. And I wonder, are our top officials also going through those types of rigorous reviews? Can someone speak to that?
I could say for our central office staff, they go through a goal setting, which takes place, um, July one, typically a few weeks in July, where they set their goals for the year, they come back to their supervisor, we discuss and agree on whether they follow, if, if we accept those goals, sign off on them. We then have mid-year evaluations, which for my team begins on Friday. And then at the conclusion of the school year, we do a final. There'll be a follow-up from the mid-year, written response to follow up on what was discussed during that mid-year, provide whatever supports to meet that final goal. And then at the end of the year, we have an end-of-the-year evaluation to look at, to determine whether they met those goals. The goals are aligned to our strategic plan.
Okay. And then what about in offices or departments in general and the vision and mission and need for that? Cuz I know that some of the offices and departments have come into being because of certain concerns or issues or needs of our system. But what if those needs are not, no longer as, as priority? What if those needs can be merged with other, you know, like the needs that, or the goals that are trying to be fulfilled by those offices can be fulfilled through some type of merging of offices or something like that? How would that evaluation process happen?
So even before we start the budgeting process, at the end of each year, we look to determine what the roles are of each person in that department or division to determine how we can make changes. And each year, my team always submits revisions. Many times, it might be a downgrade of a position once it becomes vacant, or if we find that we have a need to take a position from, that we could've potentially used for one program and move to another. So the minute that a position becomes vacant, we then begin to have conversations about what we can do to repurpose it to meet the needs of the district.
Okay. And then I guess my last era of questioning is not related to the questions, but just related to talent development and OCSI in general. The talent development in OCSI includes, oh no! Should I reserve it for next round?
You can finish this question.
Okay.
And then, and then we'll go.
So this includes the development of principals as well, correct?
Did you ask specifically if the Office of Talent Development also is responsible for developing principals?
Yes.
The answer's yes.
Okay. And so that includes data-wise training, refreshing, those types of academic trainings?
It encompasses everything, but they're utilizing expertise from various offices. So for instance, at a new principal meeting, the agenda could have people from Teaching and Learning, it could have people from OCSI. So talent development in and of itself is not doing all of the professional development, but they're helping to organize it.
So I guess, are, th- those are some of the academic and I guess professional development, leadership development work that I'm hearing. What non-academic trainings do our principals go through?
So that would be some, I believe what you're asking is like some of our culture training and as far?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking like restorative practices, PBIS, that type of behavioral training that some of our teachers go through or opt into. Are those also done for our principals?
Yeah, they are, but they aren't always through talent development. So for PBIS, they, the principal would go with their team. In some cases, they have statewide training or regional training, and they would go with their teams to receive that kinda training. For restorative practices training, the person who's assigned to do that would go to the school and do the training with the teachers and the administrative team.
Okay. I just, I feel like it's super important as we're making these pushes for RP and for PBIS and those kinds of programs that all of our principals are well-aware and informed of those practices and what those mean in our school setting. So that's my thought process for that. But thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Page?
I would also like to thank you for your responses and also thank you for adding advanced placement within the budget. I have one question in regards to advanced placement. Does the $700,000 for AP exams cover all students taking AP?
So as part of the approved budget for last school year, that money encompasses paying for those students who are on free and reduced meals, who have C or higher for quarter one and two, which my team and I just met on Monday so that we could begin the process of extracting that data. And we also will pay for any students who have beyond three advanced placement exams. So for example, if a student is taking seven advanced placement courses, which last year we had one student that did, we would pay for those four additional on top of the three. That's part of what that fund is for.
All right. Thank you. Uh, my second question is, can you explain if any additional funds were allotted to the Health Services section based off of the needs and the pillars of the community service school model that we will be implementing?
So you're speaking of the planning process for our community schools?
No, I'm asking if there were any additional funds added to the Health Services section in regards to the new pillars and model of the community schools?
So, Health Services falls under Student Services. And there was a request for additional funding to cover our nurses being able to work beyond the regular 10-month time period. In terms of the pillars for the community school, we have not seen the finalized version of the policy for your team, but we did build in positions for our community school that would address the wraparound services needed for community schools related to health.
Okay. And where would the community schools be piloted for the 2000?
That has not been established.
Okay. How much would it cost, or what would be the cost difference from locking one counselor in each high school to, um, having a 20-day stipend for all counselors?
Actually, that response is actually in the packet. It's number fifteen.
So I saw that it said that it would be more cost-efficient, but it didn't talk about the number it would take to lock each position versus the 20-day stipend.
So we could take the cost for the one locked and then compare it to the cost of doing the additional 20 days. In the response, it provides that 1.2 million would be used for the additional 20 days because we wouldn't have to pay for additional costs for healthcare benefits cuz they're already covered under 10-month. And then we could take that amount, subtract it from the amount for the locked, divide that by the number of counselors, and then be able to give you an amount.
Okay.
So for us, it would be more cost-efficient to take the 10-month, add the additional 20 days, which also allows the flexibility for those professional school counselors who do not want to become 10 to 11-month because of personal obligations.
Okay. And my last question is about math coaches. So there's a question, question number seventy-eight. The question states, what are the results of the survey on the impact of literacy coaches to inform budgeting decisions for this year? So my question is, how does the math coaches impact the budget decisions for this year?
So mathematics and literacy coaches, we're doing a pre and post survey, which was recommended by the Academic Achievement Committee last school year. So we started the pre-survey and the response to the question, which is on page seventeen, actually provides you a summary of what the pre-survey was for literacy and mathematics for numeracy coaches. We'll do a post-survey and then we'll be able to compare the beginning of the school year to the end and then determine next steps. Please know though, we also not only are focusing on the pre and post survey results, but we wanna create an environment where we can do sustainability. So we can begin to move those numeracy and literacy coaches out of the schools that are assigned, and assign them to different schools.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Page. I'll ask a couple of questions too. I'm gonna go follow up down on this school counselor and this, and the school-based budgeting question. First, one of the things you said I, I, I thought was important, so let me understand this. The professional school counselor position is unlocked. And essentially what that means is not whether a high school decides whether to have counselors at all, it's really how many. So it's not a single school that has, that decides to have no counselors.
Correct. And on average, each high school has three.
Right. So this idea of locking, you can't really, I mean, $2 million to lock one, essentially, I mean, one is already locked, right? And, and in, in essence, at least three are already locked. If every, if every high school already has three.
That is correct.
And essentially, three are already locked. And so what we might be talking about somehow is, is requiring every high school to have at least four counselors, something like that is what the effect of what folks would be asking to do. And that's, and to do that, you transfer $2 million out of school-based budgeting and put it into?
Well, in order to do that additional one on top of the three, we'd have to move eight because we'd have to move the three over and then go beyond that three to add the additional one.
Right. So, so, so basically, if you're locking, if you're locking high school counselors and you want to add, then essentially what that means is you could, you have to take at least four positions from each school and move them from school-based budgeting into the regular budget.
Essentially, yes.
And, and, and doing that would, in essence, be a net negative $2 million for, for principals' flexibility in the school-based budget because they were already selecting three anyway.
Well, not necessarily the principals, but in SBB. And it would be 2 million times four. So we've been taking 8 million out of the SBB pot.
I get that. So, but you've take 8 million, where also, 6 million is always being used by every school anyway.
Correct.
So, so the net is really, that, 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 that's where I get that 2 million net. It's not real, but.
And then, then you're gonna add on the additional request that I put in for additional 20 days for a few of those counselors. Okay, go ahead, keep going.
So, so now, I mean, I got kinda two follow-up questions about it cuz it's a fascinating concept, but the other part that I wonder, and I was looking for the list of unlocked positions. And so when you take that 2 million out, that net 2 million.
What would that imply?
Then high schools are making choices about, are being, are gonna be far less likely to make choices about the other unlocked positions, which I assume are things like music teachers and art teachers and PE teachers. And I also kinda wanted, and maybe, I mean, our math and, what, what, what else is kind of in that unlocked category?
They could buy any instructional position, so.
Any instructional, right.
Yeah. I mean, so that long list of content areas is where it could impact.
Essentially, right. Essentially, well, it could be really important to do this and it might be a good reason. We gotta recognize that it would then significantly impact the flexibility of schools to choose other instructional or non-instructional positions.
Yeah, but my recommendation would be that we do a further analysis of how many professional school counselors we have at each high school site before we begin, begin talking the transfer of funds to see, and, and trend data over the past three to four years to see what really schools have done before we begin the process of locking and cause, and, and making them feel as if they've gotta sacrifice a content area for professional school counselors, which I don't wanna create.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that, that was not on my time, you can't, as long as you don't, as long as you don't put her, put, put her on my clock. Go ahead.
I think that it's important that we look at the ratio of counselors to students and not necessarily the number of bodies of counselors in the building because that is where we, we may have a challenge. It's not whether or not we have four counselors in a high school, it's whether or not we have a counselor handling 100 students versus a counselor handling 30. So that was my only input.
Thank you. All right. That was real interesting. I'm sure I used at least half my time on something that wasn't my question to start out with. So let me get to my questions. How much fund balance did we use in this fiscal year?
22 million.
So we used 22 million. Do we know how much we used the previous fiscal year?
About that, but I can get you a number.
But is it, did we, do you, are you sure we did use fund balance in the previous?
Yes, we have been using fund balance over the last several years for one-time expenditures.
So if I look on page fifteen, and this is where, believe me, I'm, I'm a little fuzzy because I, I don't pretend to understand why not using fund balance puts us in a negative, but I take your word for it, did it make sense? But yes, I'm sorry, slide fifteen on the presentation. So, but my question is, if we, and this is theoretical, I'm not recommending that we do, but my question is, if we used 22 million dollars in fund balance, again, for fiscal year 2019, would this negative 22 million become positive 22 million and thus make a $44 million impact on the bottom-line request? Come on, come on, I'm going for it.
That was a good try. I know, you're testing me, right? Can, can I add up there's, no, it would make it, it would make that number zero, so it would have a $22 million impact. And essentially, in the scenario that we, that I presented there, it would reduce the county obligation by $22 million to keep everything equal. Because I'm using 22 and I'm using 22 again, so there's no change in revenue. That's why that number would be zero. If I was using 44 million, then yes, you would get the results that you want.
I'm sorry, I'm on slide sixteen. But, all right, I got it. But actually, I, I think, I think I got it in my own head. It, it, in essence, it reduces the county request by 22 million.
Yes, sir, correct.
All right. So, then my next question is, how much money, what was the overall increase that the county executive, county, county council gave us in the final budget last year?
Let me look that up real quick.
I don't remember. I asked a similar question last week. I don't know if I asked the exact same question, I think I did.
You did ask, you did ask the exact same question last year.
Okay.
So, um, $41 million is what the council approved us, the increase of FY17 versus the current fiscal year that we're in.
Okay. I, I got it. So, so, you know, again- So, so, you know, again, not, and I, I renew kind of this, 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 this question and concern, colleagues, about the process that we've been through in the last few years and the idea that, that we might be making a request that's at least twice as big, almost three times as big as what we got in reality last year, recognizing that unless there was some miracle happened and money started falling from the sky, we're not going to get it. And so could we make some, some, some of the tougher choices that we need to make now rather than go through the charade? So I know I talked about this last week, and, and, and I know it hasn't been enough time for you to do that analysis, but I just want to check in on kind of where we are in rethinking what it might look like for us to give, to what choices we might think about making now in order to propose a budget that is closer to one that we might actually possibly get.
So Dr. Davis, there've been a number of meetings as a follow-up to that conversation we had at the board workshop last week. We're not, we're not ready to make proposals or things, but whether we reconcile some of it now or all of it later, I mean, we at the, you know, by the end of the school year, we have to have done a reconciliation anyway. So we are talking about what that might look like and what we might propose as a result of that, and there've been a couple, you know, two or three meetings that we've had conversations about how to work through that, and, and we need to, I think, resolve, you know, like, when, when do we get a proposal to you and, you know, those kind of things, so. Because I know you need to reconcile the second board meeting in February, and I know the first one is two days away. I know there's a little bit of a conversation about budget slated, I think, for the retreat this weekend, but we could also go through the FAB CIP committee. I mean, there's a couple of different ways we could do it, we just need to kind of work through those logistics, and we're happy to have that discussion.
Absolutely. Okay, I've got two seconds. Let me get my question in, two seconds. Wait a minute, don't start yet. Two, two seconds, wait a minute. Ready, go. What are the implications if we use $22 million of the, of the fund balance?
If, if I can repeat, the implications of using $22 million of fund balance again? So we, we would only want to restrict that to one-time expenditures, because it is not an ongoing revenue source. So this isn't something that we can rely on. It would impact their fund balance, you know, carryover for amount of, of something else that we may want to do in some future year. So that would be the, the impact, and we would want to restrict that to what we consider one-time expenditures.
Thank you. Anybody else from round two, round, I mean, round one, Mr. Burrows?
Good evening. Apologize for being tardy. Dr. Davis, were you able to get a response on those non-FTEs, what they would be doing for the, the alternative schools?
Yes, thank you for asking again. We have behavior intervention specialists, school social workers, and ILTs. Behavior intervention specialists, school social workers, and instructional lead teachers.
I think those are great additions to our alternative schools, so thank you for including that.
Thank you.
Dr. Maxwell, did you give any thought, at the last meeting, we talked about your desire to be sensitive to the athletic directors' caseload, so you're adding an additional $1.3 million for athletic directors. And I, I mentioned that the caseloads for our special educators are of more concern to me than the sports teams. Did you give any concern to reducing the amount of students on our special educators' caseload versus basketball and football?
So I'd say to you, Mr. Burrows, that, you know, that's what the budget, you know, process is about. We listen to people when they put forward the requests from their different departments, and special education has that opportunity to put forward their requests as well. You make it sound like if I'm making these decisions by myself, and that's not really how it is. It's a, it's a process where the different divisions and the different departments put forward their budget requests.
I understand that you're not solely making the decision, but as the instructional leader for the school district, certainly you share some concern about the special education caseload. Is that right? I mean, do you not see that as a, as a problem?
Dr. Mason, Trinell Bowman, and the folks in special education are the ones that put forward their requests for staffing and the needs that they believe that they have and ask us to consider as a budget process.
I, I do want to interject and just make a note that you can find on page 294 and page 295 of the budget book, actual restricted and unrestricted line items that deal with elementary classroom and secondary classroom teachers. So you can add both of those up, and we can look at the total number of special education students, determine the caseload request there.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that when I go into schools and I speak to special educators and I speak to parents, everyone tells me that the special case load is too much for what we currently have in place, that you have 20 students with IEPs, maybe a dedicated aid, maybe not, and it's way too much. And so I'm just confused at why we're trying to reduce the caseload for athletic directors and not for special educators. That, that is the question that I'm trying to understand, that I'm still confused on.
And this is something that we can definitely take a look at, Mr. Burrows. With the athletic directors, one of the things that we have done in the county is that we have increased the sports. We've added lacrosse, and in addition, we have also asked our athletic directors to oversee our athletics for our special needs. This is similar to what three other counties in our system, and I need to look, I mean, excuse me, in the state also are doing, so we're mirroring that. However, if there is a need and if it's the will of the board to put that money somewhere else, that's what this process is about, and we're definitely willing to listen to that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there is not a week that goes by that I don't hear from teachers or parents about IEPs and 504s not being properly implemented. Dr. Maxwell, is there anything in this budget that will help address that?
I can't hear you, Mr. Burrows. Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure. There's not a week that goes by that I don't get a complaint from a teacher or a parent about IEPs and 504s not being properly implemented. Is there anything in this budget that, that will deal with that?
So since special education reports to me, let me respond. What you will not find are additional positions for that, but I can guarantee you that Dr. Mason and Ms. Bowman look at the current staffing, which I mentioned earlier, and in many cases have repurposed staff so that they can monitor the implementation of IEPs at each of the levels.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to round two, Ms. Williams.
So I just want to follow up on the line of questioning around the school counselors and locked and unlocked positions. I think that we have a real challenge each year with trying to decide, you know, principals in the community, trying to decide on what to purchase with their, their SBB money. And so when we look at the position status of locked and unlocked, we, I'm assuming that that list is what, the unlocked positions on this list is what the principals in the community has to determine to purchase with their SBB dollars, correct?
Are you referring to page 57?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, page 57.
So what's listed there are our locked, our unlocked, and our locked-plus positions. And, you know, so yes, you're right, the unlocked positions here, something that is purchased, locked, not. Locked-plus, we, we do an allocation, but then they can supplement that.
They can supplement. So I noticed, and, and maybe this will help us in the next budget season, to understand what this looks like when we're talking about locked and unlocked positions. So, for example, we have cleaners, that's a locked position. Are they assigned a number of cleaners based on the size of the school, or the type of the school, or the, how is that determined? And then we have locked, so I don't know if they're getting 10 or if they're getting 20. What, what does that look like?
So the, the cleaners is based on the size of the building, square footage?
Based on the size of the building.
Yes, ma'am.
So when we're trying to look at, if we would consider, and again, this is for a next, you know, to be discussed at the next budget season, when we're looking at possibly moving money from a locked to an unlocked position, putting the money in SASSR versus SBB, it's some of those things that, that we may want to look at to see if, I would prefer a position that, that it goes into the classroom or service a student, to move into more of a locked position based on the, the school, and those that service the building, if I could say that, a little less? I don't know how to, how to say it, but I just think that we need to sort of look at the locked versus unlocked positions, because I was surprised to see on the next page, maybe it was on this page, it's on page 57, that bus drivers are locked positions. And I don't know how that works to be assigned to a school when they are shared amongst several schools. So that's, that's where I'm just a little confused, and maybe we can, in one of our committees, dive into this so that we can have a better discussion around this. Because when I'm looking at the locked versus unlocked, locked-plus, it's hard to determine if we're putting the money exactly where we want it, want to go. And I just want to close out here. Because if, if our goal, and I think our entire board, our goal is to try to put as much money into classroom teachers as much as possible, and then we can sort of be a little more flexible with those out-of-classroom positions. Although every position in the school system is important, I think our goal, because what all of us are hearing, is that we want to reduce class sizes. So maybe in one of our committees, and I don't know which, if it's FAB or Academic Achievement, that we could sort of analyze this chart to determine how to deal with the SBB, and then we can start to look into the SBB formulas throughout now, you know, after the budget season and prior to the next season. Okay?
Sounds like, sounds like a great thing for our FAB committee. Let's, let's assign that to them at, at the retreat. Ms. Boston, speaking of, Ms. Boston.
So I'm back to the presentation. John, but also, were you able to find out what that tuition?
Let me follow up with you.
Okay.
I will.
Mm-hmm. On page 10.
Slide.
Slide 10, I'm sorry.
It goes to the mic.
I'm sorry. But you know what, that question was already answered. Let me go back to slide 11. So I see that on talent development, we have 307, this is $1,000 for that. What, what, what does that involve? Because I know we just got the grant, and that's, is that part of the, the teacher development? Is this additional money over top of the $25 million grant we just got?
Yes, th, these are the unrestricted funds, I'm sorry, these are the unrestricted funds that were requested back in October for talent development, and we, I can get you the idea exactly what that equals, but it is not related to the positions that we would be getting into the grant, because those would be in the restricted funds. What we're seeing here in the presentation is just strictly the unrestricted funds.
So, so, which one did follow up? So, so this talent development here is unrestricted, and the 25 million is?
Is the restricted grant.
So what does this unrestricted involve?
I apologize, I was in the wrong document, Mrs. Boston. So I believe we are now in our third year of doing the, we are in our third year of having resident principals. We have diminished the new leader program and paying for them in order to develop our principals, and we now have our own, grow your own, which are resident principals. Right now, we have four resident principals that are leading their schools, and the principals are in central office, so this would add another resident principal position.
Okay, I'm pretty sure it is something we'll talk about later as well, because I, I don't see how we can take that out of the 25 million. Okay, on page 12, the apprentice, apprenticeship shop program, I think that's, that's you, Mr. Watts. Can you explain to us again exactly what is involved in that, almost a million dollars?
Yes, ma'am. The apprenticeship program is basically, we have a lot of positions that are hard to fill in some of our trades. And what we're looking for is bringing in junior tradesmen and training them up to be plumbers, HVAC mechanics, those type of things. So this would be a program in where we bring them in and we pay them a certain salary, and as their skill improves, they move up into those positions as a mechanic, you know, boiler mechanic of HVAC, those type of positions.
Right, I, I know about that program, because we worked on that for a while, but that seems like a high number if we're talking about paying students for half a day of-
These are not students, ma'am. Those, these are individuals that have, these are tradesmen, these are grad, high school graduates, these are individuals that are in the trade that we're bringing up to be certified plumbers, those type of things.
Which means they have to take courses at the community college and also to help them get their certification.
So we're, we're paying them to, to go to community college? I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what this is.
We actually currently do now for our existing employees. We do create, because in operations, many of the processes do change, we do now currently allow our staff to go back to the community college. We assist with a reduced fee with an agreement that we have with the community college, so that they are retrained on new processes or equipment as time has evolved and changed.
That's like the, the tuition reimbursement?
Correct. It would be similar to kind of what we do for teacher reimbursement, but we do have a MOU with the community college where our own operations employees go back to the community college. It's typically done in our HVAC system, just to give an example.
So do we have, are we looking into partnerships with our unions? Because I know a lot of our unions already have apprenticeship shops where we could tap into those areas. I'm not, I'm not understanding why we, this number is kind of high for me.
I'd have to check into that, ma'am.
All right. You will get back with me on that.
Yes, ma'am, next week.
Ms. Page.
I'm, I'm wondering if any supports were added to the international baccalaureate program for coordinators, because coordinators are tasked with strenuous duties, which include but are not limited to supporting students, networking with other schools and different organizations, outreach and application review for incoming freshmen, and grading. So I want us to know if any, anything has been done to support coordinators, IB coordinators?
So actually, we did request one additional IB coordinator, but it's for Maya Angelou, because they're going through a primary years, middle years program, where it's an extension piece. In terms of additional support, what we are doing is looking at our own existing staff to determine how we can repurpose so that we can better meet the needs of our IB coordinators.
Thank you. My second question is, what additional funds and/or programs were implemented to support the restorative practices? And how will these implementations be measured for effectiveness, and how be, how will it be measured for accountability?
So we just started the restorative practices process, and currently we have seven schools who are part of the initial pilot, that the funds were granted from last year's budget, and we appreciate that. So the additional funds will help to continue that program, and our goal is to continue it in our feeder schools. So if it's in a middle school in one area, then we continue it in high schools, so that when those students leave one area and move to the next, those practices are continued. We didn't ask for additional staff, because we wanted to, we haven't had a full year with the program coordinator that we currently have. So before we asked for additional staff, we wanted to kind of assess how we did this year, and then look at the implementation process next year, and we'll begin the evaluation process of that. So it's a little too early for us to really tell you the effectiveness, yes, but it's on our radar.
And how is it currently measured, how is accountability conducted for these program coordinators now?
For the seven schools?
Yes.
That you're referencing? So each month, our- That you're referencing? So each month, our coordinator actually does monitor the number of suspensions, how many times they've done restorative circles, and how much additional support is needed at each school, what the percentage of buy-in is, and how many people have been trained at each school site.
And what schools are this, is this implemented in now?
I can provide you the list of seven.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Anybody else for round two? To my right, to my left. Ms. Ahmed.
Sure. So there's one thing, since we're talking about school-based funding and SBB, I've had conversations with a couple of different people about this idea I'm really, really jazzed about. I don't know if you all have heard of it. It's called participatory budgeting. Again, I've had conversations with a couple of people on this, and I'm learning more about it. But participatory budgeting is something that's being done on the school system level, on the high school level, and on the city level across the US. And it's this idea of community and students, specifically for school systems and high schools, students having a say in where their money goes for the school system. So where I've seen this happen is in the Phoenix Union High School District, where they've implemented it recently, and it seems to be going pretty well. Sorry, Union, Phoenix Union High School District, where basically the school system provides some funds to a school to participate in this process of students developing proposals on where they think funds should go for that school, and then school delegates, student delegates voting on, we think that this money should go here. So it's in addition to the funds that are already provided to the school. I think as we're moving forward in this exploration process, I'm trying to go to a conference, actually, to talk, to learn more about this in a couple of months. So I can come back and talk to you all about it again after that, and also learn from some of these folks that have done it well. But I think as we move forward in our budgeting conversations, especially as it relates to school-based resources and what we provide, this should be on the table for discussion. I think that it would be a great supplement to the financial learning, and also help develop in a non-traditional experiential way, students, allowing students to be more civically engaged in understanding of the democratic process. So that's just something I wanted to mention. I know I'd mentioned to a couple of colleagues on the board and also administrators, but I wanted to make sure that that is something that everyone is aware that I'm thinking of and working on.
Mr. Burrows, you have a second round?
Yes. Dr. Maxwell, when I look at your executive summary of your budget, there are a couple of goals outlined with your promise that you made to the citizens to have the state SAT score meet or exceed, the local SAT score meet or exceed the state average and ACC, and ACT score, along with achieving a 90% graduation rate and a 100% college and career readiness rate. You also listed several other key indicators: kindergarten readiness, park scores, advanced placement scores, IB scores, dual enrollment, and PSAT. Is it possible to get a three-year breakdown of the scores, or since 2013, I just want to see where we are in this promise and how this budget has impacted that promise to make sure that we are moving in the right, moving in the right direction in an ethical manner?
I think, I think we can pull, I think we have done some presentations on the data so far, and I think we can pull that together. I don't see that as an issue.
Yeah. And I have a lot of that, I know a lot of that data. I guess what I'm specifically looking for is like what in this budget has contributed to the SAT scores? What in this budget will get us to the 100% college and career readiness rate? Because when I look at several things and that you've proposed, the, the athletic directors, I know you want every instruction director to have their own secretary. You're adding several positions to central office. I'm not seeing the correlation between your bloating cabinet and central office versus the goals that you've outlined. So I'm just trying to better understand what are we doing in the budget to help meet these goals? Because I agree with these goals. I think that these are good goals. I'm just not, it's not readily apparent to me how what you're proposing achieves these goals.
Thank you. We'll, we'll have a conversation about how we might be able to help explain that.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone else for the second round. So that concludes our... Ms. Hernandez, will you, will you give Ms. Williams your round? Okay.
Good question. It really is. It's a quick question. And it, it goes back to a topic that we talked about last, last budget hearing. And it's surrounded around transportation. So in the budget, we have the contracted bus routes that we set aside some funding for. So I'm just trying to understand the, the thought process around asking for additional dollars for existing routes. Is that right? We're, we're pulling out the out-of-county routes and trying to contract those out.
That is correct. So we are in, in the process of bidding out approximately 50 routes. Okay? These are non-public routes. These are routes that we, buses drive outside of the county. In that, we, we put an estimate in there. When we, when we did that, we put an estimate for that, as well as, I think, additional money for the software for the GPS system. As you know, we, we also have a driver shortage. And one of the things that we want to do is we want to make sure that we have the, all the drivers, you know, available to us, as well as the contracting. As I stated last time, we're doing a lot better this year. And, and, you know, next board, next budget hearing, we can talk a little bit more in detail about that. I'll bring more information. But we are down to about 25 FTE vacancies, 20, excuse me, 20 FTE vacancies. And we have individuals in training, so hopefully that'll go a little lower, which, which will help out dramatically. Another thing that we're doing to try to make it a little bit more efficient is we're working on some school start time changes that'll make some of our routes a little bit more efficient as well.
So I have to say that I think that you all have done a tremendous job in coming back from, I think we had 75 positions that were open at one time?
Had over 100.
A few years ago. And so we've done a tremendous job in that, in doing that. And I actually got an email today from a parent who had a concern about late buses, and that has been corrected. So I really appreciate that. And I guess during the next budget session, we'll be talking about transportation in more detail.
All of operations, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. So I'll hold my question for, for then. But I do appreciate what you guys are doing in transportation. And I know that our new bus drivers are the ones that are able to not have a CDL, come into our school system, become a part of our system, get their CDL, and become bus drivers. They appreciate that also. So thank you for the job that you're doing.
I'd like to thank the HR department as well, please.
Yes, and the HR department. Thank you.
Ms. Boston, you wanted, you had an announcement?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to ask everyone to say a prayer for our former Chief Finance Officer, Ray Brown. We heard he was just taken to the emergency room. So I wish everyone to keep him in your prayers today. I hope he have a speedy recovery.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Indeed, our prayers and thoughts go out to our great friend and colleague, Ray Brown. So thank you again for participating in the budget work session for the FY 2019 Proposed Operating Budget. Next week's budget work session and public hearing will happen on February 6th, a week from today, at 5:00 PM, with a public hearing followed at 7:00 PM, both at Oxon Hill High School. Colleagues, I will remind you again that we have questions answered 47, 48 through 98 in writing. I don't see our, our board executive director, anybody remember when the deadline is for the third round of questions? I'm sure you guys do, because you're, did it pass already? It was Tuesday. So hopefully you submitted your third round of questions, and those will be ready for us to review and discuss next week. So that concludes the operating budget. It is, okay, about a little after 6:30. If you are here for our budget public hearing, please do stick around. We will begin our public hearing promptly at 7:00 PM. Thank you.